Welcome, I, we may have more people join us. I'm going to begin, it's, I have seven o'clock. The library, on behalf of the library, I'm Peter Cartamone, I'm the library board trustee president. And we've done this annually for the community to get to know the candidates. Feel free to stop your video or not, and I'll ask Morgan to ask the questions of the candidates, which I think we have all three of the candidates on. And address the first question, we'll ask each of the candidates to answer every question. But we'll start out with a different candidate each time, and Morgan will choose that. We have one incumbent candidate, Ed Wortley. I think he's identified his iPhone on the listing here, Zoom. And just remember to unmute your own your own link, and then mute again, so that we only have a person speaking and Morgan as being on, so we don't get any background noises. We have a set of questions. Morgan will ask follow-ups as she sees fit. We've done this a couple of years, and it's worked very well. The three candidates, Ed Wortley is a, an incumbent running for reelection, Debbie Vito, and Andrea Bastido-Mori. And I think all three of those are on at this point. If at any point you get knocked off because your internet just signed right back in. So Morgan, I'll let you go to the candidates now and ask them.
Okay, hi, I'm Morgan. Our first question is, why do you want to be on the school board? And I guess I'm just gonna go across my screen. So Mrs. Bastido-Mori, would you like to go first?
Did my unmute work? Okay, excellent, I just wanted to check first. This is actually my second running to try to become part of the school board. Both of my children are in the school district, Carly is a senior this year, so super excited for her. Connor is in eighth grade, another wonderful young man. I've been part of the district now since, since my kids started school. I've lived down there for almost 20 years, actually well over 20 years, between Tully and Otisco. So this is my community, this is where I have the absolute opportunity to make a change and do a lot of good. I think it takes a community to raise our children, to educate them. I'm part of the community, my children are, and I want to be part of that positive change. To be honest with people like Ed Wortley and Deb, they're just really good people, and it's a huge opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Wortley, would you like to go next?
Sure, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, so, well, that's probably a very good question. I've just completed, I'll be completing my sixth year of being on the Board of Education. Believe me, there's a lot there to learn. Learn something new about every day or at every meeting at least. But I, same with me, I have, I grew up in Tully. Been a part of the community, and my children go to Tully to school. And I there's a lot of things that I've been involved in with the school, with a lot of the capital project and the safety committee. We've hired a lot of people throughout the, throughout the past six years. It's a very challenging to be on the Board of Education, gotta tell you that, but I think in the, at the end of the day, we all do a pretty good job. There's a lot to, there's a lot to it, there's a lot to it, but that's pretty much why part of the community, want to try to do good for the best for everybody. Get our kids well-educated. That's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Vito, would you like to go next?
Sure.
I think you muted yourself. Okay, you're good now, go ahead.
I need to learn how to work a computer. I've lived in Tully for probably about 12 years, 13 years now. I was born and raised in Mattydale, went to school at North Syracuse, graduated there at North Syracuse High School. But I'd really like to, the opportunity to really work with the board and help out with everybody on there right now, that's there now, and try to make things better for all the kids here in Tully. And main focus, you know, get things taken care of that really needs to be done. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So our next question is, what do you feel is the most important role of a school board member in the functioning of a school district? So I'm just gonna go across my screen again, Mr. Wortley, would you like to go first?
Sure. The most important, the question was, what's the most, most important of the role of the, of the board members, what you asked?
Yes.
Yeah, so the most important thing is, well, there's a lot of important things, but like I just said before, it's, you're there for the, to children, I mean, it's for educating the children, and you want to do the best that you can possibly do to get the most for them. And, and opportunities for everybody, no matter what, what their needs are, or what their, you know, ability is, you know, people learn. It's been a very, very, very tough year. I really feel is being a board member, and that it's been a tough year with all the virus stuff. I feel real bad for a lot of the kids. Mostly, I feel a lot, really bad for our senior class. So I really feel that they really didn't get an opportunity to be seniors. As much as people, they probably don't realize, it's probably the best year of their life. But back to not try to get too far off track here, but there's a lot of very, you know, it's right down to hiring, hiring of teachers, faculty, staff at school to get the best teachers in there, to do the best job that they can do. To help our kids learn. Down to, you know, there's a lot of special needs kids, there's a lot of programs out there that we're offering to help out. But at the end of the day, it's for the children. And there's a lot that, there's a lot to the Board of Education, a lot that people probably don't even realize that gets done. You know, down to facilities, what we have to do at the facilities to keep them running, to keep them everything up and going, so. But at the end of the day, it's really all about the children, you know, so we can get the best for them to learn. I hope I answered that question for you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Vito, would you like to go next?
I have to agree with Mr. Wortley on it also, because I think that's the most important, is the kids are the most important, important in this school. And it's, it's gonna be a challenge, obviously, like he says. You know, I don't know what's going on yet, but I'm up there for, to learn, and I hope I get the opportunity to really learn what's going on and go forward with it all. And like Mr. Wortley says, and I agree with him 100%, the kids are the most important, and with the virus right now, it's crazy. So I have to agree with everything he's had to say on that, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Obviously, you know, we're, we're there as a Board of Education because of the children, so I, I think that, you know, we all do agree with that, that the children are the, the biggest part of it. But I think, you know, I think the role becomes even bigger than that, it, it is important to, to know know that we care, but we have to know what the issues are. We have to get those issues, they have to be brought to us, whether it's through the children, whether it's through the parents, whether it's through the teachers. That's the second part of the battle. But then I think the, one of the hardest parts is, once you know the issue, is knowing the proper way to be able to resolve the issue. You know, we hear about the problems, we all know our gripes, you know, we want our kids back in school, we want them, you know, learning together, we want them safe. You know, we want security in our school, we love our SRO. You know, I feel like we know what a lot of the issues are, but I think one of the most important roles of, of being on the board is knowing how to address those issues. What do we have to do to get those policies through? What are the, the rules, the regulations, what are we bound by? And how do we navigate that course? Because, you know, caring is the first step, it's tremendous, but then it's the research, it's the understanding, and it's bringing that problem to the proper authority for resolution and doing it the right way. My education is, is public policy and administration, and I say that because I have that understanding, and I, and I know Ed does, and I'm sure that Deb does too, working in the respective areas. It's hard, it's hard to get things passed, pass the votes and done the right way, and throw in the finance and the funding. It's, it's a really tremendous undertaking, so I think what is one of the most important roles right up there with caring and understanding, is learning the processes and being able to make that change the right way, so that it will last.
Thank you. So our next question is, how have your previous experience or activities with the schools prepared you for a position on the school board? So Mrs. Vito, would you like to go first?
Yes, hi. Well, I was a bus driver for a while for Tully. I work someplace else now. And but working with the children, it was a big challenge every day. There was always something going on. And you have to have the backing to work with those kids and work on those buses and work in those schools. You have to have the help and the challenge and the knowledge to do all that. You know, and teachers, staff, principals, everybody, they all have to come together, to work together, to do everything right. So I really think that, that's a big focus right there, getting everybody aboard to do everything the way it should be.
So we do have one follow-up. Some people were wondering, what was your reason for leaving, working with Tully?
What was my reason for leaving?
Correct.
I think I'd rather leave that confidential to myself in a way. I, I know, well, no, I'll be honest with you, I was asked to leave. I was basically, said that I didn't know what my job was and how to do my job when I know how to do my job. And I'm a school bus driver someplace else. And I don't have any problems where I am now. You know, people work together, and like I say, you have to work together. You have to be a community, and you have to, everybody has to work together and help one another out. You really do. You know, if you ask for the help, you get the help. And that's what I want to see done. I want to see that done. You need help, let's get it, give it to the people that need it. I just want to see everything work out good.
Thank you, and thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Bastido-Mori, would you like to go next?
Absolutely, thank you. My previous experience started with Carly, when she was in the elementary school, and actually, I'm sure most of you guys know Mary Ann Murray and her family, so I firmly believe that it was Mary Ann's goal to drag me into the PTO. So her and Amy Peltier, for everybody who remembers her, they, they kind of brought me into doing stuff with the school, and I spent several years as their secretary, then, then I became the PTO president, and then eventually turned that over to Jessica Walker, another amazing parent. And then I helped her out for a while. So being the PTO president, and then secretary, and all those good things, huge learning experience, was able to meet a lot of the teachers. I did a ton of the fundraising, I probably have more chocolate and candles than I will ever need, but part of the fundraising, when Carly went into the high school, and then I had one child in each school, you know, you try, try to divide your time a little bit. But that's where I was able to, to get more involved in some of the junior high and high school events. Did a lot of coaching, I coached a lot of the kids' sports. Some good, some not so good, I should never be allowed to coach soccer, it's not one of my good skill sets, but very good at T-ball and softball, did cheerleading. That was all a ton of fun. And then as Carly got into the older grades, I've gotten to do a lot more with them, you know, the, the program with mock trials has been amazing. I don't really have a participation in that, more of a, just being able to go and watch, that's been great. And then the whole senior year, and actually even the junior year, working, you know, with the parents on how are we gonna fundraise for for prom, or not for prom, or for dinner, or trips. I think my volunteering and starting in with the school was as a parent that wanted to be a part of the process and understand it. And since the day my daughter entered, like, one of the best school districts in the world, that's where I've been, and my intent is to, to stay involved through my son's graduation. And then hopefully, they'll eventually have kids, and there'll be grandkids that'll be going there too, so that's my experience.
Thank you. Mr. Wortley, would you like to go next?
Sure. So I think I'm prepared every time I go to a meeting, but by the time I leave a meeting, I still, boy, I wasn't prepared for that. There's a lot to it, once again, I said, said before, but, you know, I have kids involved at school, involved in sporting events and everything that goes on. And like I say, there's a lot to, there's a lot to learn. And you learn something new all the time there. I think that it's the board, I mean, you got a responsibility, I mean, you got to keep the taxpayer in mind, you got to keep the students in mind, the teachers in mind. You got to keep the faculty and staff all in mind, and the, and you got to go out and you have to represent them all. And then you'll get there, and then somebody throws a curveball at you, and there's something new that comes at you. Once again, yeah, you had listened to what everybody has to say. And, you know, and then you have to sort everything out, but to be prepared for it, I don't know how you'd ever really be prepared for it, because every time, it seems like there's something new that comes along. And, but, you know, you got a board, and one thing about a board, you know, what makes a good board is you got the right to disagree, to agree. You know, at the end of it, and that's what happens with a lot of the things that we do. And there's a lot of things that you don't have in your control. It goes to the, to the state. And they have, they have, you know, there's a lot of stuff that has to be mandated to be done. But all in all, preparing for it, there's a lot of parts to it, like Andrea said about the PTO and all that stuff, I mean, they do a lot of great things for for the school, and, and a lot of parents are involved in it, which is great, but all in all, it's, you know, I listen to my kids, they come home, they tell me things that go on there, and which is a lot of good, good things that they do, but yeah, that's what, that's all I got to say about that.
Perfect, thank you. Our next question is, can you please tell us about what you would hope to accomplish as a part of your personal agenda as a school board member? That is, there are many specific issues, I'm sorry. That is, are there any specific issues or changes you think that the school board needs to move on soon, things it may have ignored or lost sight of? Please be as specific as you can. So Mrs. Bastido-Mori, would you like to go first?
That's a really hard question. And, you know, I, I say that, Morgan, because this is coming off of COVID. You know, had we not, had we been anywhere else in history, you know, even two years ago, and when we got to do this, you know, it was, I was very clear, I knew these are my goals. And those goals two years ago seemed so lofty right now because of where we are. My whole mindset has changed. My largest goal a, as a parent, and, you know, as a prospective member of the board, is reintegration of our students into the district with some semblance of normalcy and complete safety. I'd love to say that, that I know exactly how to do that, I certainly don't. I've, I've been a police officer for, for years, I've worked as a school resource officer. There's, there's no easy way to answer the question of how do we get all our kids back and, and make it, reintegrate them, have them feel good, have the parents feel good, not being worried about we're gonna quarantine this group, you know, for 14 days, and this is going on, and that's going on. This is a really tough time. So what would I like to see? I'd like to be able to see, my first priority, a very smooth transition through the rest of this year. I'd like to see a solid end of year for these seniors who have really, much as Ed alluded to, had a very, very difficult junior, senior year experience. I'd like them to go out the door happy, and, you know, they're gonna have a prom that's tremendous. Even more important than that, how are we going to deal with summer school, and how are we gonna transition next year's students back in? What is our plan for everybody? And I think parents need to feel comfortable about that, kids, I say kids, students need to feel comfortable about that. Because it's still, it's still scary, it's still not really stable, and I know a lot of that is, state guidance isn't clear. You know, kudos to, to Mary Ann Murphy, I give her credit for the things that she tries to figure out every day, when those changes come down. And, and, you know, and Rob Hughes, and, and everybody in the whole district, how are they gonna take each change? My, my biggest aspiration at this point is a successful, smooth reintegration, end of this year, reintegration into next year, and hopefully a, a good plan for summer school, because it's still tough, and there's still a lot of, a lot of raw feelings out there.
Thank you. Mr. Wortley, would you like to go next?
Sure, and Andrea hit that, had right on the nail when she said that, because it, it has been a very trying year, and I was actually, was part of the reopening steering committee. Which did a lot of, I didn't do nowhere near as much work as the staff. Like Mary, like she spoke about, Mary Ann Murphy, Mr. Hughes, Mr. Kupiak. They, they did a lot of work to get the students back into school. A lot of stuff came out, I mean, and, and then a lot of things would change from, from day to day. So back to what the question is, is that, you know, it's gonna be a tough getting through the rest of this year, there's not a lot of time left, but it's gonna be, you know, and, and as Mrs. Bastido said, that it's, you know, these kids are gonna have a good prom, you know, get through the year, but when you go into next year, you got to get all these kids back on track, and I know a lot of them are probably behind because of, you know, from learning at home, or trying to be on the computer. If they're anything like me, and not good with the computer, it's probably been real hard and trying for them to learn, and they're gonna need a lot of support, and we're gonna have to give them a lot of support, as the board, the teachers are gonna need the support. Because some of the kids, some of the kids are gonna be ahead, some of the kids are gonna be behind, and then you're gonna have the middle-of-the-road ones, and I just, I, I feel bad for the kids, because I think they lost, they've actually lost well, well over a year of schooling. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be tough, and it, you know, and it's you know, and some of the special needs kids, with Christie at the school does a great job with them, getting them, getting these kids into what they need, and getting them in, because they need, they need structure to be, to go ahead, and, you know, I, I just, I I'll tell you, I feel bad, once again, for all the kids because of the year, the last time, I mean, I, and I've seen it with how excited my kids actually are to be back. My daughter did go to school in elementary throughout the whole thing, but my older daughter in the high school was out of school, and she, you know, she got back now full-time, which is great, just to see the excitement in her, and, and the learning, but, boy, I'll tell you. Here, and we're really gonna, we're really gonna have, I feel that, and I hope everything gets back to what we say is hopefully normal next year, and they can start the school year off, you know, the right way, instead of the, the way it has been, and hopefully things will get better, but it's been a tough year, it really has, and, and to say, you know, what you, you know, what you could bring, it's, it's been a tough year, I mean, I probably have a little more advantage over them too, because of being on the board for six years, I mean, because, I mean, we're working on a capital project that's coming up, and, and and stuff on that, so I mean, there's things that got to be done on that, and then on the safety side of it, of the school, there's we're always working on trying to keep everything safe there, and so there's a lot, there's really a lot to it. And I do feel that this next year is gonna be probably a tough, trying year for a lot of things, because there's gonna be a lot of shuffling of of students and teachers to just to try to help these kids along, so that they can get, get kind of caught up. But thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Vito, would you like to go next?
Sure. I have to agree with both of them. Like, like Mr. Wortley and Andrea said. It, it's a lot of work, it's gonna be. I don't know what they do, but like I say, I'm out for a challenge on everything, and I want to learn it, we're gonna do it. And we have to listen to the community, also, all the parents. Not just the kids, but the parents too. What's going on with all this COVID stuff going on? And let them know, we're going to take care of their kids. The kids are the main focus, we're gonna take care of them, no matter which way, what we do, we're going to take care of the kids, and they're our focus right now. And we have to, you know, we have to listen to the parents when they come into the meetings, hopefully, they come into the board meetings. So we know what they're looking for, and what they need to know, and what we should do. And we have to support everybody, we really do, no matter who you are. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So our next question is, what do you feel are the three most serious issues facing our school system? And Mr. Wortley, would you like to start?
Sure. The three most issues that face, well, usually money's a, a top one when you come into finances, and I know this year's been a crazy year with spending money on all the different things for the PPE to get everybody back in school. So money's always a question, an issue there, because if you don't have the money, you can't provide the proper education for them. Which goes down, the next point is, is you, the biggest thing, another biggest thing is, you want to get the curriculum, and you want to get the curriculum so that it's in line with, so that the students can learn. And then the third one that you know, is the safety of the kids at the school. And then, I mean, I'm not really putting them all in order here, but I'm just going off, but the safety of the, of the kids, so that they're, everything's safe there. And that everybody, at the end of the day, goes home safely, and so they're the three things that, probably the three biggest things at the school that, that really needs that are probably the three biggest things at the school issues, I guess. Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Vito, would you like to go next? I think you're, I'm, you're muted again. There you go. I think you're good now.
You think I'm okay?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, like Mr. Wortley said, the finances is very, very important. And we have to make sure that there's a balance on everything. You know. And like I say, taxpayers are, are right there, everybody's hurting right now. You know, everybody is, not just the kids, and not just the school. Taxpayers are hurting themselves too, at home. So we gotta really focus on a lot of things. We gotta focus on the money situation. Transportation, making sure that everything's good with transportation, getting our kids to and from school. And making sure they're all safe, and they're happy, they're not afraid of anything. Okay, and kids can be very nervous on a school bus, and I know. All right, I've been there, and I'm still there. All right, I've been there and I'm still there and I see it every day. So that's a big focus right there, making sure the kids are going to be safe and they have the understanding to what's going on. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mrs. Bastido Mori, would you like to go next?
Thank you. And I'm really going to follow suit because I think that the the three main areas have really been addressed. I I think safety and security for students and parents is first and foremost. I think that our children need to feel safe in school. We need to have open communication and our parents need to feel safe sending them to school. And that's, that's the full gamut. That's whether they're walking, getting on the bus, into the building, you know, eating out of the building. They should feel secure. Without that, the educational process just cannot be successful. Which I think does bleed into that next section being curriculum. And I do think we need to, as a board of education, you know, guarantee to our parents and to our students too, that we are providing them the education that the state requires. The education that they need to make them successful for college or for their occupation or their trade or whatever their decision is. But I think, and that's one of the areas I sometimes think we, we don't communicate well enough on is is providing to our parents what that curriculum is and and what our importance is within that curriculum. And then unfortunately, Ed, I hate to have to agree with you on this, but man, finance, money, the almighty dollar does run a lot of things. And I think it, like you said, if we're not solid with that, things do not get accomplished. So are we budgeting our our proverbial checkbook the right way and allocating the right funds to the right resources? You know, whether that's building maintenance, athletics, curriculum, facilities, school bus, transportation, et cetera, are the appropriate allocations being appropriated to the appropriate resources? Which is a whole mouthful of stuff. Are we balancing our checkbook the right way and the way our community wants us to allocate that money to our children? Thank you.
Thank you. So our next question is, what is your vision for the district? What do you plan to do to make the school a better place in the upcoming year? So Mrs. Vito, would you like to go first?
To make the school a better place in the upcoming year? It's really hard to say with everything going on right now. It's scary. And I just hope everybody understands and they can all just look forward. And I think if, as long as everybody puts their focus together and reach out to one another, everything's going to work out and we're all going to have a really good upcoming year. And I think a lot of things, like Mr. Wortley said once before, a lot of things have to be taken care of. And it's a big challenge to what we're looking at, but we're going to get it done and the kids, if they have problems, come, go to somebody. Let them reach out. Let them know that there is always somebody there in that school or on that bus. Because like, who is the first person in the morning that you see? Before you go to school, you see your bus driver. You have a problem? Talk to that person. And I know you have good bus drivers there. And I know the bus drivers are very glad to help anybody, anytime, day or night. And I agree that you really have to focus on one another. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Bastido Mori, would you like to go next?
Thank you very much. You know, I feel like this kind of goes back a little bit to, you know, what our personal agenda is. Because I think in many ways, that's what we hope to see next year. For me personally, I I hope that we we get our school back and we get our family back and having been in the district now with my students and they're this being my twelfth year. I I know what it felt like to to get to walk into the school and see the kids and watch the ceremonies and watch the plays and you know, instruments on the lawn and, you know, barbecue, not barbecues, well, actually, yeah, barbecues too. We just did so much. I miss it. I I hope that the board, you know, in conjunction with the state and the school district is is able to to bring that back. We're missing it. As much as our kids are missing getting back, we're missing being back there with them too, and I think that that's going to be tremendous. So my vision, next year, again, it may be the quote, the new normal, but we're going to be back together as as a school family. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wortley, would you like to go next?
Sure. I'm unmuted, right? You can hear me?
Yeah, it's a little bit glitchy right now.
Okay, yeah, because I'm on the haywire here.
It's a little bit better now.
Okay, yeah, back to what both said. And they said that, yeah, it'd be nice to see the school get back to to normal, the vision. I haven't been in the school that much as I was in the past. Wasn't able to go to any of the events that the students put on, whether it be a band concert or or they're, they have that hot dog thing in the spring that they can't do again this year. Whether, all that stuff, a vision that, you know, that's why, I really feel that in the last year, I kind of fell behind because I wasn't at the school. I mean, it seems like I was at the school all the time for something. Whether it be a meeting or whether it be for something that my kids had going on there. And I really, when I thought about we're running again, I really had thought about that. I'm like, I I really felt that I kind of let down myself, to be honest with you, because I wasn't there all the time and didn't know what was going on and which is kind of sad in life, but hopefully we can get back to more of the more, I don't hate to use the word normal all the time, but we can get back to normal and you know, so you can start going to these events and where you receive parents and kids and you hear what's going on and you hear the concerns and and things. So hopefully that we're going to get back to this and that's the vision. And and just to see, just to to be able to be in the building and just to see what's, see the, see what's going on there. And most importantly, the kids can do their concerts and their sporting events and all these things. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So our next question is, what is your ideal relationship between the roles of the superintendent and you as a prospective school board member? So, Mrs. Bastido Mori, would you like to go first?
Absolutely. Thank you very much. That should be an open, informative relationship. It should never be adversarial and I don't think it ever would be. I think that's the nice thing about our community. We have a great district. Everybody is working for the common goal of our of our children. So that relationship should be one where we're able to to gather information, give him good information and then help him make an educated decision. So as I said again, I think, you know, we have a lot of people with a lot of institutional knowledge. People, you know, much like Ed Wortley, who's got six years on the board. You know, and he's able to provide knowledge that's institutional to the superintendent to to guide those decisions. So partnership, knowledge, trust is so important and honesty, integrity is paramount. Oh, I want to throw one more in there because I always, I never want to forget this, but I also believe transparency is huge. So the superintendent should have faith in his board, know everything that we're doing and and vice versa.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wortley, would you like to go next?
Sure. And I can only speak, of course, I have a little, I have a little more advantage once again. But I can speak that back to what I just said before going into the school. There's been a good many times and I said that actually to Mr. Hughes probably about two months ago. I used to, when I was ever in the school, I would pop into his office and never once had he denied to speak to me. We'd sit down, maybe if you have a five minute or it could end up being an hour conversation. So it's good to have the relationship with your superintendent and that they, that he listens to what you say and, but no, there's never been a time I can pick, pick the phone up that he, if he's not available, he calls me right back. So I guess I have a little more of advantage on those two by saying that, but so yeah, you need to have a good working relationship with your superintendent and with the board of education. So and like back to what I said, I do, I would always pop in there and get a little bit caught up on the speed of what was going on throughout the month without a meeting. But but no, that's a big thing. You need to be, have the communication between the board and the superintendent. And we do have that communication with them. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mrs. Vito, would you like to go next?
Yes, and I agree with, you know, with Mr. Wortley and Andrea also. We have to have the communication. Everybody has to work together. And if you do not have the transparency in the work and you don't work together, you're not going to have anything. And it won't, won't work. So I have to agree with everybody. You have to work together to have everything fall into place the way it should be. And I know, yes, I'm gone from, I was gone from there for quite some time. But I know I'm looking forward to coming back and helping out and working with Mr. Hughes, Mr. Corbin and everybody else. I really do. I really can't wait and hope everything works out great. Thank you.
Thank you. So our next question is, please tell us about some of your recent activities that involve children or young people. So Mr. Wortley, would you like to go first?
Sure. Well, I have two daughters that both attend the school. One of my daughters had softball game last night at the school. The other daughter was practicing softball. So that was two of the big events. Once again, back to I really haven't been to the school functions and know as anybody. Of course, now with the spring sports out, we'll be able to get on campus and and watch them outside, which is good. But throughout the year, this year, we weren't able to do any of it, but I mean, I've always attended the concerts that they had at the school, any events. Of course, we had the parent teacher conference in elementary school, which was always exciting to go to every year. But we couldn't do any of that this year or the end of last year, we couldn't do it either. Can't go, we have, there's been no open houses to go to, which I love to go to open houses because you can see the things that the students did. Not only your own kid, but the other ones did. So I really kind of feel that I'm probably a little bit of a letdown this year to tell you what the most recent things we did besides. I'm pretty excited. I got to go to a softball game last night, hoping that if we could go a month ahead, I hope I could have a lot more to tell you here, but tough, tough time at the school to do anything, but every day I ask my kids and it became kind of a joke. I'd ask, well, what, what did you learn today? And they would say nothing. I go, well, there's no sense of going back tomorrow then if you're not learning anything today. And then I would start to get little pieces of them, what they learned. So I do hear, every day I hear a little bit of scholar, what went on in school with this or that or what they learned or something that the teacher might have said or told them or whether it be funny or or educational to them. So that's really what, that's really about the most excitement that I can really, I guess I have rated them to tell you about right now. So, but thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Vito, would you like to go next?
Sure. Maya muted. I haven't really been at Tully School in quite some time, but I know I have a couple of friends that they talk about, I ask them how the kids doing. The kids playing ball tonight and they're all excited knowing that their kids are back playing sports and I'm so happy for them all. And I know in the past that the elementary school had a daddy and daughter dance. And obviously I'm sure that probably isn't going to be going on again this year. But, you know, I talked to the kids where I work and I watched one of their football games online. I literally watched a football game online and it was like, wow, we're actually really doing this on a computer watching a, you know, school football game. It was exciting, but not to say it is being there and right there at the stadium and I can't wait. And I look forward to seeing things like that. And I watch and I listen to my friends talk about their kids going to basketball, football and they just can't wait. They, they really need to do everything and I, I read the newspaper about Brooke Ruber winning and she's going a long way. And I hope and pray to God, everything works out for her in her college year. You know, and I follow that in the newspaper about Brooke. You know, it's exciting to hear all the stuff. It really is. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mrs. Bastido Mori, would you like to go next?
Yes, I have become a Zoom and a YouTube master, I got to tell you. So, you know, like kudos to our athletic director, Mr. McClure. I got to watch, you know, my son play basketball and you know, Mrs. Milano, total rock star. I got to watch my daughter with mock trial and same things Senora Abrams doing the presentations for, by literacy. I I have, you know, gotten to interact via the computer screen, which I'm thankful it's there, but I'm happier that we're now getting to go to some games. So things like senior night, the football game at Jordan Elbridge, I am, got to be honest, a little traumatized from that football game. Although I guess kids get hurt occasionally. I still hate seeing it. So, so much of my interaction has been via the computer and that's just where we are right now. But that, that's our community and I know we're going to have a food truck day coming up soon, so I'm looking forward to that in a couple of days. And I have not tried either one of those, but getting more interaction as it's being allowed to be done safely.
Perfect. Thank you. So our next question kind of goes along with what most of you talked about with the last question. But just to elaborate more, if elected, would you feel a responsibility to regularly, regularly attend school functions? Elementary and junior, senior high school as your work or family schedule allows? And then why or why not, depending on your answer? So, Mrs. Vito, would you like to go first?
Sure. Yeah, I'd be very honored to attend some of the functions at the school. And I like, especially I, I've always, even with my kids, I had two boys that were in football and I used to love watching the football games. It used to get very loud, but that's a mom thing. You know, you have to run around and cheer them on and run up and down that field. But I used to like that. I miss those days. And I know I have a grandson that plays football for Cicero. And another grandson that's just starting T-ball. And but it's exciting. It really is. And I like that stuff. And I would be very, very honored to attend some of these things at the school. It it shows that we are there for everybody and we're there to help and we're there to work with everyone. So if they see us there, they know that we really mean that we're going to help them out, do whatever is possible. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Bastido Mori, would you like to go next?
Yes, thank you. And yes is the short answer to that. Absolutely. I mean, my kids are already there, so you know, by virtue of that, I'm obviously, there are more. But it's our community. I, my kids, their friends, our family, you know. It's funny, there used to be a time, I hate to admit this as a parent, but every once in a while I'd be like, oh my God, I dread this play because I've seen the same play fifteen times. Now I'm like, oh my God, what I would give to see that same play fifteen times. I I do miss it. Can I go to every single thing? Absolutely not. I I'm in Iowa right now. I got called out of town. It it happens. I go to what I can go to. There are some things I enjoy doing more. I love doing fundraisers. Like I think the food truck or selling Gertrude hot, not because of my chocolate addiction. I like doing that stuff. So there are some events I enjoy more than others, but I want to be at all of them and I try to to go to the things I can. And if I can't, I try to, you know, give my assistance in other ways if, you know, if I'm able to. But so yes is a short answer. You got the long answer too.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wortley, would you like to go next?
Sure. Once again, I agree with both candidates, other Sure. Once again, I agree with both candidates, other candidates too, that, yes, I can't wait. Excited to get back to events and. Is Mrs. Bastido said about the food truck coming at on the end of the week here. That's an exciting thing. I can't wait to. I used to go to all these, even if my kids weren't in them, they'd want to go and I would go and I'd want to go with them to when they'd have the plays. You know, that they put on. So, yeah, excited to go back to whether, didn't even get to see a football game this year. I know they did have their last one at home. I didn't wasn't able to attend it, but notice my schedule allows me. I like to go. Never did see a basketball game this year at the school. But his schedule allows me. Yeah, I try to make the events. I can't make them all. But. I'm excited to get back to some of these events here. So. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So our next question is, what is one power you wish the school board had that it currently does not? So, Mrs. Bastido Mori, would you like to go first?
I'd like it to get rid of COVID. I don't know if that's really possible, but that, yeah, if they could do that, we'd be, we'd be on the front page of the paper. You know, I guess if there was one power, I wish we could make the common sense changes without having to go through the bureaucratic hoops. That that would be the power. There are so many things that are just common sense for for a small country school that. We just can't always do because there's so many hoops that we have to jump through to get there. So. If we could have that common sense superpower, that'd be awesome. And COVID would be gone because it would be common sense.
Perfect, thank you. Mr. Wartley, would you like to go next?
Sure, I'd like to get the magic wand too to get rid of COVID. I have to agree with Andrea on that. But, yeah, if they. You know, she's right about that. If you could just get through the and have the common sense approach and if you could just get. Some of the things that 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 you have to do, if you could just have more, a little bit more control over that. Which would be better, but there's a lot of things that you're just mandated to do. By the state or by the federal government and there's just just things, if you had a little bit more power. So you could could take care of those issues and faster than trying to go through, it would be great. So, yeah, that was, that would be, that would be 100% great if we did have a magic wand and we could get rid of COVID out of our school and all that, out of everywhere. That'd be great. So, but thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Vito, would you like to go next?
I agree with both of them. There's really nothing else really to say on it because I agree with what Andrea and Mr. Wartley said. First thing, yeah, let's get rid of that COVID, you know, but. I have to agree with everyone right now. I don't really know of anything else to put on the table, but I agree with it. We have to take care of everything right there. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Our next question, are you able to stand up and have a voice of your own amidst strong personalities? So, Mr. Wartley, would you like to answer first?
I'm pretty sure I can. Maybe somebody could, I'm usually not too afraid to say what I think at any of these meetings. So, yeah, I'm pretty sure I have a voice. To stand up for what I think. Probably some people say I say too much sometimes. But no, I don't have a problem speaking up for what's right or wrong. At any at any given time. So I feel pretty strongly that I can, I have a pretty good voice when it comes to. It's probably too probably too much of a voice here. So, but no, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Vito, would you like to go next?
Yes, yeah, I I don't have a problem with speaking up either at all. It might have been reason why I resigned from Tully. Because I don't have a problem with speaking up and saying what's on my mind. And there's times where I might put my foot in my mouth before and I shouldn't have done it, but. I'm not afraid to speak up, not at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Bastido Mori, would you like to go next?
I I have no issue with it at all. You know, the only caveat that I would just add on there is that, you know, if I'm going to stand up and I'm going to, you know, go against the grain. I'm going to take a second and make sure that I have a solid argument and that I'm not going against the grain to be obstinate. But then I'm going against the grain to say this is the right thing to do and this is why. And I think once we take the time to do that, it makes a difference and it's it's the right thing to do and we can validate the reason why we're doing that right thing.
Thank you very much. So our next question, I think we should have time for at least one more. What do you think of the school district's policy towards students with special needs? And what would you do to change it, if anything? So, Mr. Wartley, I think, did I start with you last time? Am I going in the right order?
Yeah, I'm yeah, I'm fine going.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So, the special needs, we spent quite a little bit of time throughout my six years with special needs. There, like I said, I think that they do a good job to help out the special needs kids. There's a lot, there's a lot of, lot, a lot to it. When it comes down to it, but they have a pretty good program and they work with the kids. And I haven't really heard anything different on that. But I do feel that we have a pretty good program and I I would not definitely not want to lose any of that program. That's something that we need to to definitely keep up on and and take care of it. And and accommodate that their needs that they have, because everybody has different needs, but. You know, some some kids have a little bit of special needs, some kids have a lot of special needs that they need and and it varies from year to year at the school, but. I'm telling you, as I said, this is Bob, Chris, he does a great job at this. Getting kids. Getting the kids, you know, aligned with if they need a special aid to help them out or whatever, but. You know, going to their house to help them out or with family issues or whatever. We're on top of it. We brought in some other, we brought in a few other programs there and I. And, of course, we started it out with getting them to come in to help last year. Pre-COVID and I don't really think it really got taken off as good as it it could have. Because of the just no one could go go and do things or they couldn't come to school and they couldn't have the meetings, but. But no, when it comes to special needs, I have definitely, I've always been behind whatever that they needed to do. So. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mrs. Vito, would you like to go next?
It's really hard to answer, Morgan, because I have not been there at Tully School, Tully School in quite some time. But I have to agree with Mr. Wartley. Kristy Bobbitt, from what I, you know, remember, and I did work with her before when I was there. She's a hard worker and she's very focused on every every child that she works with. He's right there with them. And the parents call her all the time. She works very well with parents. I do do remember that. But, like I say, I have not been there in a while. But I am sure whatever Kristy Bobbitt needs. It's going to work out for her. And she's very, very knowledgeable in what she does with every single child in that school of the special needs program. And there is a lot of children that even go out of district. So. I I applaud her very much. I really do. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mrs. Bastido Mori, would you like to go next?
I would. And I'm going to apologize before I answer because I do have to sign off. You know, again, I apologize. I was called out of state unexpectedly and in a different time zone that I have to go back into the office. But as far as the special needs, you know, I I love the fact that Tully takes a very inclusionary approach toward. Not only helping the children, but keeping them in the building, involved with the classes and with the students. You know, I got to see the program when Mrs. Cox was there and I mean, she's just amazing for a multitude of reasons. I think Mrs. Bobbitt's continued just an amazing program. You know, these are students that require a little bit more attention and our district is taking the time to to give them that attention. To take it a step further, I had a very close friend in a local district who was struggling tremendously. Just with understanding the process, because it is an extremely overwhelming process as a parent to understand the IEPs and the diagnoses and where and what your child's plan is. That being said, our district was willing to talk to an out-of-district parent just to be of assistance. And that says a lot for what we offer. I'm also hoping my friends will move to Tully, but that's another story. We're just that good at what we do. So I think we're on the right path. I think we need to stay there. And again, Morgan, I'm going to apologize right off the bat. I really do have to sign off, but I want to thank you for being an amazing commentator. You do a great job.
We're done. We're done with the hour. We're going to give everybody a chance to make a closing statement. Do you want to do that before you leave, Andrea?
I would absolutely. Peter, thank you so much. I do appreciate that. I guess if if I was going to make a closing statement and I certainly put it out there, if anybody wants to talk to me offline, please feel free to to reach out to me, but. You know, I I spent my career in law enforcement and in the military. I've worked inside the schools as an SRO. Our children are our future and they need to be what we focus on as we come out of this COVID process and get them back into school. And I think as a community, as a school district, we need to work, parents. And we really haven't talked a lot about teachers today, but oh, my God, they're just such a major part of that equation and we need to work with our teachers and we need to work with our parents. And I'd like to be part of that process. I think we can bring a lot of good. I think people like Ed and Deb bring a lot to the table. We have amazing principals and an amazing superintendent. So, you know, I look forward to it. And if anybody has any personal questions offline, please feel free to reach out to me. I'd be more than happy to answer them the best I can. Thank you so much. And Peter, thank you so much. I appreciate helping out.
Thank you very much. And I'm just going to keep going across. Mr. Wartley, would you like to make a closing statement?
Sure. First of all, I'd like to thank you. You did a great job accommodating. Thank you very much. And I would like to thank the library and Peter Carter-Bone for taking the time to to set this up and let us voice our opinions. Like I said, hopefully, we can get back to a little bit of normal here. And Mrs. Bastido just touched on it that that. You know, the teachers really too have had have had a pretty trying year. With with all the changes and a lot of them had to go from classroom remote and some, you know, in elementary, high school was doing the remote. A few days a week. Well, they were doing it, some kids were home every, every two, excuse me, two days a week, they were only in school. So every, they were out of school. So they were doing it. Where they were doing the remote learning, but I got to thank all of them for hanging in there and doing it. I know, I'm sure it wasn't easy for a lot of teachers to do that. A lot of them. I know that my daughter's teacher in elementary school, when they had to go remote when they're out, she did a great job. So I can only thank them for that. And hopefully. If everything goes good, everything will get back going here and. Any questions, I'm more than open to answer anything. And I appreciate everybody's support that they've done throughout the past few years that I've been on the board. And hopefully that I can support them in their decisions here for the next three years. And once again, I want to thank you all for having me tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mrs. Vito, would you like to make a closing statement?
I would just like to thank you and Peter. Thank you so much for letting us all voice our opinions. And I look forward to seeing everybody, I hope. And I see Mr. Hughes is here. Hello. And I hope, you know, everything works out good and we can all work together and have a good three years to come. And. Leave the past in the past and go forward with everything and let's get rid of COVID. That's our number one. Let's get rid of that. And I appreciate everything that everybody has done. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, Morgan, for moderating. I thank the candidates for your statements. And as I said, we've made a recording of this. We'll make it available through Mary Fisher and through the library. And that'll probably be tomorrow, if not for sure by Thursday. So, thank you. I'm gonna end the meeting now and appreciate everyone's time.